Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. It's our last regular meeting of the year, actually. December 17th, 2020. Welcome all who have joined us. We've got a very, very lengthy agenda today because we've got a bunch of budgets that are in front of us. But again, thank you all for joining. So we will start with silent prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Please join me in silent prayer.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The move that we approve are the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Right, so I'm gonna pause for one second here because I just got revision three to the agenda. So I assume that both of you have this in your inboxes. So what agendas are the two of you working from?
I have two.
Okay, let me just clarify. When I joined this meeting, the agenda was still compiling, and I just printed some documents because I couldn't email anything yet because it wasn't really finished doing its thing. When we add these items so late in the game, it takes a lot to get the agenda compiled to include all of the paperwork. So I'm gonna jump out of this meeting for just a second.
Okay.
And I'm gonna try to get agendas to everyone.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so to be clear-
What is the difference?
There's additional by leave items, there are two of them. There's items 17 and 18. So Jackie, would it be easier just to forward the by leaves over?
I did. Leslie just sent by leave 18, which is an actual resolution for the MSD CIP. And if you look in your emails, I think that they should probably be there. Other than that, by leave 17 is a communication from Herschel Daniels.
Okay. Those are the only two additions?
Yeah, that's the only two. Sorry, I just got this-
No, no, not at all. MSD just sent this over like 20 minutes ago, so it's all good. So I tell you what, why don't we work off, they're so similar, we'll work off revision number two, and then as we get to Jeff and start to click through the by leaves, we'll simply add the additional two, and by then you will have them probably in your inbox. So we'll just kinda, this is how this meeting is gonna go, I'm afraid. Because this is our last legislative meeting, and so there are so many items on here that we need to pass on, so that is just the nature of the last meeting of the year. So with that-
And it is this year.
Right. It is the nature of 2020 in general, indeed. All right, so public comments is next. Bridget, is there anyone on that would like to comment to anything that's not related to an agenda item?
A request for the attendees, if you'd like to raise your hand, we can unmute you on our end, but it doesn't appear that anybody's hand is raised right now.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Let's go to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I know we do have a long meeting, but I do just have a couple things to say since we will not be talking to the public, but we'll still be working, of course. And I'd just like to start out, and I've said it before, when this pandemic started, for me, it was a tale of two cities where Charles Dickens, I'm taking it from him, the best of times and the worst of times. And of course, we know for 2020, the worst of times was this pandemic, this silent enemy coming through our land and through, and so it led to the death of many, many people, but also the death of businesses, the injury and suffering of businesses, and also people not being able to pay their rent and not being able to work and make the money that they normally would make. The loss of entertainment, the loss of recreational activities, we all know those things. And so those were really the worst of things. But as we talk about the best of things, I'd just like to leave this with our people in Hamilton County, the best of things, I think families have come together even more, not necessarily physically, but emotionally, and that relationships hopefully have been strengthened. I really think one of the best of things was the CARES Act funding, the $142 million that Hamilton County got to be able to undergird those people and agencies and businesses that were suffering. And we often say that absence makes the heart grow fonder, and I'm hoping the absence of recreation, the absence of arts, the absence of your people and your family will make us just even come closer together as a county. And so I think it will make our county even stronger. And so lastly, I'd like to talk about the Lincoln Heights range, I'm gonna bring that up again, and so you can just kinda play that back, but I'm just really disappointed that there was no movement as it relates to that, not a date given, no closure done. And so I'm just very excited about next year because I'm just really comfortable in saying that I don't think we will go through 2021 without something being done with the Lincoln Heights range. And then lastly, just wishing everyone a happy holiday, however you choose to celebrate that, hopefully safely, to all of the ones that are listening and all the ones that have listened in the past. And that will end my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Parks?
We have a very long agenda, so I will save my comments for later. Thanks. Okay, you're muted.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'm just trying to sort through the paperwork on my desk. So yeah, thank you, commissioners. I too, I want to remind everybody, we do have one more meeting, it's just a staff meeting on Tuesday at 1:00, that'll be the final meeting of the year, but this is our last legislative meeting. So I too wanted to just reflect that it has been a very challenging year for this board, for the people that live in Hamilton County and beyond, and we particularly have had some challenges related to the death of Todd Portune in the beginning of the year, it seems like a million years ago. But it was a tremendous loss, given his public service to this community. And then we made our way into a pandemic that had a tremendous financial and emotional impact on businesses and individuals that live in Hamilton County. There were protests in the streets related to racial justice and equity, and we had a budget in front of us that has some uncertainty in it because of the ongoing pandemic and the nature of what that means to our budget. So I want to thank my colleagues and for all of your dedication and service to this community. I think we've worked well together, and I'm very grateful for that. And staff, of course, for, you know, hanging in there in a really difficult time when so many people are working virtually, and our connectedness is just not quite the same. And yet, we've gotten through all the work. So Jeff Aluto in particular, John Brugan, Holly Christman, and the rest of the team, we are very, very grateful for your work, and that of all the other departments throughout the county who are our partners and have been our partners as we went through significant budget cuts, given the pandemic, and everyone was willing to do their part, and it really speaks to, I think, the nature of the work we do and the collaboration amongst the departments. So I too want to wish everybody a happy holiday, a little premature, we've got one more meeting on Tuesday, but yeah, happy holidays to everyone. Well, I think we'll all try to make the best of it. Make a plan to not be near people, but make the best of it during the pandemic. We're almost there, we've got a vaccine on the horizon, so I'm glad of that. So with that, Jeff, I'm gonna turn it to you. We have, I would like to elevate the budget to go first as we make our way through all of the by leave items.
Certainly, so we can take those first, and those would be by leave 14 and by leave 16. By leave 14 is the CIP for 2021, by leave 16 is the operating budget for 2021. I'll just walk through both of these briefly, Madam President, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, and let me just start by saying that, thank you again for your work, and I know John Brugan is on the line as well. Just to refresh, we did have public hearings related to these budgets. We were grateful for the public comment that we got, particularly related to human services and some of the needs that are ongoing out in the county, and we have responded to that, and I'll let you speak to that, Jeff. But we are very grateful for the public input, whether it was a public hearing or emails or phone calls to our offices to help us formulate a budget that is really reflective of where we are going as a county collective with the citizens of this county. So with that, yeah, Jeff, if you could move us through this, we've talked so many times through the budget because we had it as a standing item on our staff agendas, but if you could give us a broad overview of the budget itself, but also the response to the memos and the comments from the commissioners and the public as it relates to the final product.
Commissioner, Jeff, before you get started, can I clarify with the commissioners that they did receive the by leave 18 and that you got the new agendas, the revision number three in your emails? Did you guys get those?
Thanks, Jackie.
Okay, sorry, my apologies. I just want to make sure they had what they needed.
Thank you. Yeah, so I will go through by leaves 14 and 16. As you said, Madam President, we had one presentation on this where the budget was introduced, then we followed that up with two separate public hearings, so I will not go into any major depth on this. Suffice, and I'll start with by leave 16, which is the operating budget. This appropriates two things, both the general fund budget of $290.7 million, it also appropriates the restricted funds of the county as well. So as the board is aware, from a general fund perspective, this is a structurally balanced budget, it's balanced at $290.7 million. The budget includes not only strengthening of some of the financial pillars of the county, but it also includes a reinvestment in many of the policy priorities that the board had indicated at the start of 2020 that it wanted to invest in, including things like making progress on deferred capital maintenance and improving many of the operating systems of the county, but also some of the more external-facing investments, be it in a sustainable public safety model, economic development, and as well as our work in equity and inclusion also. So the budget does make significant strides in all of those different areas. The board, Madam President, as you indicated earlier, did provide some feedback to the administration, the resolution that you have in front of you, while the general fund budget total amount, the $290.7 million, does not change from what we have recommended, I believe all of the feedback that the commissioners have provided has been taken into account in a couple of different ways. For instance, some of them are earmarked against the general, we have some priorities in the board earmarked against the general fund reserve, so this won't show up as an appropriated amount in the general fund budget, but it is there, and it is an earmark that the administration will need to come back to the board in 2021 as we look for an appropriation. So this would include things such as the bonus pay program for county employees, it would also include an earmark, and this actually is a little bit of a change from where we were on Tuesday. The board had requested that we look at the issue of our building inventory, and while the budget itself does include funding for our architectural partners to look at consolidation and defragmentation issues, we thought it would be a good idea to earmark around $500,000 against the county general fund reserve in the event we do have a larger sale or acquisition possible where we have to do some real heavy architectural work looking at some consolidation opportunities. So again, this is not to be appropriated and spent, we would have to return to the board with a plan for doing that, and the board would then vote whether or not to appropriate in that manner, but we just thought that was wise, given the board's policy intent on that. And finally, a million dollars earmarked against the general fund reserve for affordable housing, which, again, this would involve the administration putting together a plan in 2021 and returning to the board later on in the year as to how we would go about allocating and appropriating that million dollars, whether it would be for planning services to help with the planning on this, or whether it would be to seed an initial strategy on furthering affordable housing in the county. And then, when you move past the earmarks, there are some other things incorporated as well. For instance, we have built into the work plan of the county things like exploration of satellite office opportunities. So that's a good example of something where there is nothing necessarily built into the budget right now, but we will be exploring that in the work plan, and we will be returning to the Board of County Commissioners in 2021 to indicate whether or not there will be a financial aspect to making progress on that particular policy goal. So that's a little bit about how we responded. I didn't want to go through each and every item, but I did just want to let the board know that we did respond, I believe, in depth, and really across the board, I think every one of the board's policy directions, I don't think there is one where we said this is just something that we would recommend against. It's either included as an earmark, it is in the appropriated budget, or it is something that is in the work plan for consideration and further work with the board in 2021. So with that, Madam President, I would turn it back to you, at least as it relates to the consideration of the 2021 operating budget for the county, which again does include $290.7 million in general fund dollars and $739.9 million in restricted fund appropriations as well. The administration obviously recommends approval and happy to answer any questions. I do as well want to thank John Brugan and all of his staff for just the tremendous amount of work that they have put into this over the past several months, and all the broader team in all of the departments and independent agencies and the fiscal officers and the department heads who all worked as a team to get their individual departments loaded into the system and the discussion that went along with that.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments related to the budget?
Madam President, I would just say that this is part of the best of times, that we did not know how we were gonna land with this pandemic, and due to the hard work of Jeff and John and the Finance Department, that we were mandated to be structurally balanced, but we also were able to include some items that we did not know if we would be able to do. So we came on top with this, also knowing that there are some risks that may happen in 2021, so I'm really in favor of this budget.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Yes, likewise. You guys just amaze me. The teamwork, the, it's like you guys do a dance, and everybody is in sync, and it's just, it's harmonious, no matter how crazy we are or what happens. I mean, really, the sky fell, and you guys just kept your footing and, you know, had a few dips, there were some twirls, but the dance continues. So thank you so much. I just, I'm gonna miss you guys.
It's a nice metaphor, I like that.
Yeah, it was, yeah, Jeff, and everybody dancing.
I don't think you want to see me do that, but maybe some of the others on the floor, so.
It is the holiday, so.
Something else, I also want to bring up who keeps us all together with our clerk, who manages this paperwork, gets our agendas together, and like I remember when we had the presidency, we would shock her all the time. So, you know, so that's her position, is to absorb the crazy, and she does it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, today is a good example of that.
You know, we just, we have to do what we have to do.
That's right. Yeah, thank you for those comments. So I too just want to comment that, you know, we've got a balanced budget in front of us that stabilizes the work of the county, it makes really important investments, ongoing investments, and investments in some of the priorities that have been laid out in the policy document, which is reflective, I think, of where the community wants to head collectively with the county. So, you know, things like the Justice Center treatment beds that are coming online next year, Coroner's Office is coming online next year, our collaboration with EMA getting ready to dispense a vaccine, the disparity study will be coming on next year. We've got some revitalization grants for communities and investments in the port and ready for site readiness, and investments in kind of the nuts and bolts, the IT, you know, some of the capital improvements that were outlined, and most importantly, our employees who are, you know, deserve to be recognized for their work, especially in a really challenging year. And so I think this budget hits it on all marks. It's prudent, it leaves a reserve that's reasonable, heading into a pretty uncertain few months here in the beginning of next year. So I think that the Budget Department has done a tremendous job in balancing all of these things together, and I'm very grateful for the work of especially Jeff, John, and you're right, the clerk Jackie, and Holly Christman at all, for all the work that they've done and will continue to do on behalf of the citizens of this county. So with that, it sounds like we're in agreement, so I'm gonna go ahead and move that we approve of the Resolution Number 38 establishing 1 billion in appropriations to defray public expenses to the County of Hamilton, Ohio for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, and the item that would go right along with this is by leave number 14. This is the 2021 CIP. This is probably as close to a ministerial item as you can get, really, when it comes to passing a budget. It is really passage of a plan. We're not really appropriating any projects here with this budget. What the board is doing with this is approving a plan. That plan includes, as you saw in the cover memo on this particular budget, the allocation of 2.1 million for the most critical deferred projects that we have in the county. Those actually are, is a part of the county facilities' operating budget, so you've approved that already with the county's general fund budget, but nonetheless, the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, essentially ties all this together. So you've got the critical projects in the county that are funded through the operating budget, and then there is an entire list of the universe of other projects that are going, or that are being planned all throughout the county, that you are, by passing this budget or this plan, you are not approving any of those projects. Ultimately, the administration will need to bring those back to you at a later date if the timing and the funding is available to move forward and if there's a recommendation to do so. So by passing this plan today, all you're doing is, again, kind of putting the seal on the fact that we are moving forward with our most critical projects in the county, and there is a list of those in the memo that was provided to you in your packet, but they include things like electrical system upgrades at various buildings, fire alarm replacements, facade assessments and facade replacements in some of our buildings, cooling tower replacements, this is kind of the guts of the systems in our county buildings, and you are also approving that big, broader list of projects that are out there, of which, if we want to move forward on any of them, we have to come back to the board for that approval, similar to what we did a month or so ago with a slate of projects that we are now moving forward with. So with that, I would recommend approval of the CIP, but before I turn it back over to you, Madam President, I'll ask Assistant County Administrator for Budget and Finance, John Brugan, if he has any additional questions on this or any additional comments on the CIP.
I have nothing.
All right.
Short and sweet, John. All right, very good. Gina, I see you, we do have, Gina Marsh would like to comment to the budget. So ladies, why don't we let her speak first, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. Bridget, I'm gonna ask you to facilitate that.
Great. Gina, you are unmuted on my end. There we go.
Excellent, thank you so much, commissioners. I just want to thank you on behalf of the Human Services Chamber for your commitment in this budget to affordable housing. While there are many human services needs throughout our county, affordable housing is a critical one. As you know, we have too many households who are paying over 30% of their income on housing, and too many families who are addicted and facing homelessness due to inability to pay their rent, especially in the wake of this pandemic. So it is refreshing and reassuring that you, as commissioners, are in touch with the challenges that your constituents are facing in terms of necessities and quality of life. I also want to take this opportunity to thank you and the Hamilton County staff for allocating CARES Act funding to support our human services nonprofits. This funding was incredibly helpful to many of our struggling nonprofits and those that they serve. And I want you to feel free to contact me as you explore how to best assist in the area of affordable housing. Our 70-plus member agencies are ready to help as a source of information and expertise. So thank you all, and have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you so much to yourself and to your members for participating as we brought this budget forward and tried to address the needs that you so clearly outlined for us during the budget hearings. Ladies, any comments for Gina?
Just thank you so much, Gina.
Thank you, Gina. I believe that I speak for all of us, we are proud to be able to do this.
Bridget, is there anybody else that would like to speak to the budget public comment?
Do not see any other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and you know, it goes without saying that as we pass these two budgets, two things are at play here. One is that we have an extra quarter cent that we have available to us to do all of the things that were just outlined. We're in a unique position right now and will be ongoing to really address these needs that we think are important and we care so deeply about. So I just do want to state the obvious here, that that's the reason we are not struggling to just keep the lights on as we have in years past. And the CARES Act funding obviously had a tremendous impact on what we did this year, and Holly Christman, huge shout out to Holly and Bridget and to that team, but it allowed us to help in a way that we would not have been able to help otherwise, because we simply wouldn't have had the resources to do it. So very, very grateful that funding that really, with the rent assistance, small business assistance, really helped us step up. And commissioners, you are correct in saying that, you know, it was so important, I think, to the community that we do that. So don't want to lose sight of kind of the bigger picture, I suppose. So lady, any comments related then to the capital budget in front of us, the CIP?
No comments.
No comment, thank you.
Okay, in that case, I'm gonna move that we approve of Resolution Number 37, adopting the 2021 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm happy to continue through the by leaves now, if you would like, unless there was any other items that you wanted to take out of order on the agenda.
No, I don't think so. Let's just start with number one.
All right, we can do that. So by leave number one on your agenda, commissioners, is Resolution Number 31. This is, sets the 2021 appointments to and the compensation levels for the Veteran Service Commission, consistent with Section 5901.04 of the Higher Rights Code. The administration recommends approval.
Can we take by leave number two also?
Certainly. By leave number two is, also relates to the Veteran Services Commission. This is the appropriation level for 2021, and this is something that we've done annually for the past several years at least. The Veteran Services had requested, believe- for the past several years, at least. The Veteran Services had requested, I believe it was 1.36 million in appropriations. The county administration had recommended 1.28 million. And we are just recognizing in this particular resolution that the General Fund Reserve contains the delta, especially as it relates to veterans relief payments, that if those are needed, that those are available for appropriation, recognizing that is, that those are payments that would need to be made if they, if they, if they materialize. John, anything else you want to say about this? Nope? Okay.
Okay. Any questions related to by leave item one or two?
No questions.
No questions.
I'm going to move that we approve of Resolution Number 31, setting the 2021 appointment to in compensation level four, the Veteran Services Commission, and the Resolution Number 32, Veteran Service Commission Appropriations Fiscal Year 2021.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number three is a municipal road fund agreement. I'm going to defer to the representative from County Engineer to discuss this item. I don't know if Eric is on or if a representative is on.
I see Eric Beck's name. There he is.
I am here. Jeff, you caught me off guard. Sorry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This is allowing the county to, the county engineer to distribute municipal road funds to the various municipalities that we, that have applied for the funds through our office for fiscal year 2020. I believe these are 2020 funds.
All right. Isn't this just for one project?
And I believe this is specifically the Montgomery Road Project. Yeah, City of Norwood, Montgomery Road Project. It's a total cost of $100,000 from the municipal road fund.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
The move that we approve of the Resolution authorizing municipal road fund agreement relative to the improvement on Montgomery Road between the City of Norwood and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yeah.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number four is a sale of real property between County Board of County Commissioners in Green Township. This is 0.172 acres on Leona Drive in Green Township. I believe it was former MSD property that was purchased, no longer needed. As is the case under the Higher Revise Code, we have the ability to work directly with political subdivisions for the sale of property. Green Township is looking to purchase this property, I believe, for some additional parking for, I believe, Boskin Park.
Boskin Park.
It's, and it is being sold to Green Township at the auditor's book value of $110,000. The administration recommends approval.
Any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
My family used to have their family reunions at Boskin Park.
Really?
A little tiny, tiny park in Green Township. So I'm glad it's getting some more property. It was a, it's a tight spot for hundreds of drehouses. So I'm going to move that we, I had to tell my mom about this one, approve of the resolution declaring that certain county-owned real property is no longer needed for the public use and authorizing its conveyance to Green Township.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yeah.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item, by leave number five, is the, is approving a two-year agreement, January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023, with Plant Moran for monitoring and oversight services for the county for MSD, as it relates to MSD. So this is the contract that we approve every couple of years in order to have a team. We don't have on, on staff, an on-staff team to provide the monitoring and oversight services as the Budget Office might do for our other departments. And we contract for those services with Plant Moran and a very small team of accountants and engineers to help us oversee the work of the sewer district. So the administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Questions.
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that explanation, Jeff. I'm going to move that we approve of the Resolution authorizing an agreement between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and Plant Moran, Inc., for monitoring services related to the operations of MSD.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number five is the, oh, we already hit that. By leave number six, I'm sorry, is a communication reporting, no objection, the issuance of six liquor permit applications. I believe we are receiving these for the record. Clerk Pinochet, is that correct?
Yes, and we will, we'll forward the findings to the Liquor Control Board.
Okay.
As well.
Very good. Without objection, we'll receive this for the record.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Some of my favorite breweries are on this one. Just a reminder to support our local businesses during the holiday season. But gift cards are always a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. By leave number seven is Resolution Number 36. This is a, an annual, really the first annual contract with Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society for Animal Services. This is essentially an extension to the temporary agreement or the partial year agreement that we had done in 2020. This is for 3.85 million or 12 monthly payments of $320,835. The contract goes from January, January 1st of 2021 through December 31st of 2021. Want to again thank John Brugan and his staff for all of their, all of their work on this. I know that the Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society is up and running now. I know several of the Commissioners have been out there. I've been out there and John, I think, has been out there. And we've got a lot of work to do on the facility side of things and some other, and some other areas. But I think in terms of promoting, again, a sustainable approach to animal care and dog warden services that, that tries to promote reunification of animals with families, animal foster care, et cetera, they are off and running in a good way. So we will continue to work with them in 2021. And as such, the administration recommends approval of this agreement.
John, is there anything to add?
I would just note that this is a few hundred thousand dollars lower than the initially proposed budget. There's some rollover money from 2020 that we're able to apply to 2021. So this is about $350,000 lower than we anticipated.
Great. Commissioners, any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions, other than, that's awesome.
Yeah, it's good.
Thanks.
This is a good one. Yeah, so I'm going to move that we approve of the Resolution Number 36, authorizing a county administrator to execute a 3.8 million contract with Cincinnati Animal Care Humane Society for Animal Services.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leaves eight, nine, 10, and 11 all relate to collective bargaining agreements with four separate bargaining units of the county sheriff. By leave eight is with the Sheriff Supervisory Association representing the corrections sergeants, lieutenants, and captains. By leave nine is the Hamilton County Sheriff's Association representing enforcement officers and corporals, court services officers, evidence technicians, and enforcement clerks. By leave 10 is the tentative agreement with the benevolent employees of the Hamilton County Sheriff. And by leave 11 is the tentative agreement with the Hamilton County Corrections Officers. The administration obviously recommends approval of all of these, but Madam President, happy to, I don't know if you just want to approve them all as one in one lump sum, or if you want to take them item by item.
No, I think we can do them all together. We've heard about these in executive sessions, and so I feel like we're all up to speed on this. So are there any questions related to any of the four?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to roll through these all together then. So I'm going to approve that we approve of the Resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and Hamilton County Sheriff Deputy Sheriff Supervisor Association representing corrections sergeant, lieutenant, and captain, and approve of the Resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and Hamilton County Sheriff's Association representing sheriff, enforcement officer, and corporal, court services officer, evidence technician, and enforcement clerk, and approve of the Resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and the benevolent employees of the Hamilton County Sheriff, and the Resolution approving the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners and the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office and Hamilton County Corrections Officers Association.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to by leave 12. This is an appointment of one member to the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District Board. As the Board will remember, there is a new special improvement district formed overlaying the Over the Rhine community that needed to be voted on and passed by property owner, a majority of property owners in that area. I believe that was approved back in October by a figure of over 60% of the, of the property owners. As Hamilton County is one of the owners of property within the district, especially a significant property owner, we are entitled to one board member. The administration is recommending Ms. Lisa Webb to serve on that board. Lisa, as you know, is on John Brugan's staff, does a great job managing various, I believe she serves as the budget analyst for county facilities. She also has, obviously being in the Budget Office, a solid financial background. She's also well steeped in a lot of the community development, community enhancements issues that, that special improvement districts are charged with taking on. So the administration recommends Lisa Webb as the appointment for the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District.
Any questions?
No, she'll be a great representative.
No questions. Thanks.
Going to move that we approve of the Resolution appointing one member to the Over the Rhine Special Improvement District Board, that person being Lisa Webb.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff, I'm going to take by leave number 13 because it is related to your contract. And I just want to say that we are grateful for all the work that you have done on behalf of the county, and we are looking forward to our ongoing relationship with you in the coming years. Commissioners?
I agree, Madam President. You said it all. He's doing a great job. Thank you.
I totally agree. I think we, like, we've already been on mushy and complimented Jeff. So, yeah, you rock.
No, don't overdo.
Much appreciated.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. So I'm going to move that we approve of the Resolution amending the employment agreement of County Administrator Jeff Aludo.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave item number 15, we're going to skip over 14 because we approved that with the CIP. By leave 15 is a budget adjustment, it's budget adjustment number 47 in your packet, 5.2 million year-end adjustment for a multitude of things, including grant appropriations for the River City Correctional Facility reentry, as well as supplementals to ensure payroll for, for various restricted fund balances. And where eligible, those balances are being offset with CARES Act funding to address the COVID-19 pandemic. So, John, anything you wanted to add on this particular item, or any, any of the items of note that you wanted to highlight?
I would just note, since the, since the agenda still says 5.2 million, that we threw Jackie a curve ball this morning and bumped it up to 5.4 million. So your resolution itself should say 5.4 million. We added a supplemental for the juvenile court and a new grant for the Environmental Services Department.
Okay. I'll make the correction. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, Jeff, just on this one, it reminds me that we have many, many grants coming to the county for a variety of purposes. I was recently reminded that the Addiction Response Coalition has received a lot of federal money for the pre-arrest diversion program, for the quick response teams, for a lot of the work that we are doing. And I just, I think it's worth noting that we have gone after these grants and received them for the good of the county. And we will be bringing an individual on per the budget to help us augment that and continue to bring in additional dollars outside our own, you know, revenues. So I'm especially excited about this one and increasing that pot as we move forward. Commissioners, any comments to by leave 15?
I have no comments.
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move that we approve of the budget adjustment number 47, 5.4 million for year-end corrections grants for River City Correctional Facility and the Office of Reentry and Restoration of Restricted Fund Balances used during the COVID emergency.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. I believe 17 is a communication to receive for the record.
Yes. So I will move that we receive, it's a communication from Herschel Daniels. I'll move that we receive it for the record.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yeah.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And I skipped over 16, obviously, as that was the, the Resolution establishing the operating budget for 2021. And the only remaining item would be by leave 18, which is the Capital Improvement Program for Metropolitan Sewer District, which, Madam President, I'm going to assume would like to move to the regular agenda.
I am. I'm going to move that to the regular agenda as we deal with the operating budget of MSD. Let's do them both together.
Great. That would conclude my by leaves. Madam President, I just would like to thank the Board for a tough call in 2020, great year, but a very, very interesting year. I think we, as Commissioner Somer Dumas said, I think we, we did a lot of great things in a, in a very trying time. So I want to thank the Board for your policy guidance throughout the year, and also thank all the department heads and all the staff across the county for just a great job done in a, in a really turbulent time. And I know we've got a lot of work to do in 2021 and look forward to working with the Board to get that done.
Thank you. Ditto. All right. Let's move to the regular agenda. So items one through five are related to the Engineers' Office. Eric has popped back on. We'll turn it to you, Eric.
Thank you, Madam Commissioners. Again, I would like to thank all of you for what you've done this year welcoming me as a, as a newcomer this year. I appreciate that. It's been interesting. Item number one is a resolution for taking Markley Road and Zion Road landslide stabilizations out to bid. These are being funded by road and bridge funds and by FEMA funds. Number two is setting the public hearing date for the repairs to the sidewalks and drive aprons along various county roads in Anderson, Colrain, and Springfield Townships. Item three is the 2020 Sidewalk Repair Project Final Assessment. This allows us to take any property owners who have not paid for their sidewalk repairs yet to be assessed by the auditor. Item four is allowing the county engineer to fulfill the 2020 commitment to the townships for the 20% funds that come out of license plate fees. This is a reimbursement for projects they have completed this year. And number five is a amendment to the joint agreement between Warren County and Hamilton County for the engineering contract on Field Zertle Road between Snyder and Wilkins Boulevard. I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of these.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Eric. I also want to thank you for working with me. And any questions that I had, you were so, you immediately sent responses, and we did not miss a beat. So I thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
Um, I really don't have any comments, but other than thank you, Eric, and you, like, I think you and I had a conversation. I'm wondering, did your predecessor know what was coming? Because he got out, he got out just in the nick of time for you to say. Because he got out, he got out just in the nick of time for you to step out of the frying pan into the fire. But you were graceful.
That's right. And I had a conversation with someone out in one of the western townships this morning about a road project. And I was reminded that we have, I want to say more money than we have in many, many years, that we've been allocating to infrastructure projects, roads, bridges because of the license fee. Yes. And so, you know, I think, you know, it's worth noting that there are a lot of projects moving forward out there. And Eric, thank you for being at the helm and guiding all of that work and making sure that, you know, we're spending all those dollars appropriately. But we're doing more than we have in the past. And so I think it's worth noting that these areas, whether they're small or big or far or near, hopefully are seeing some more activity than usual.
Yes, thank you.
Great.
All right, I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda items one through five.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, MSD is up. So we've got MSD regular agenda items six through nine, and we are going to pull in the by leave as well. So I see that Jack is lit up and so is Diana, the Director. So Diana, I'm going to turn it over to you, Director of MSD.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I ask you that we do the budgets first, the operating and the CIP first.
Oh, okay. Well, I am going to, I guess for the operating budget, Jack was going to, Jack Renningham was going to introduce the resolution that the board will be approving. In terms of the budget itself, we didn't have any additional information for today. So I will let Jack do that. And I believe on the CIP, since it was a by leave, Holly Crispin may be addressing that. But I'm going to let Jack do the operating budget first. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For item number nine, which is the MSD 2021 operating budget, the legislative request is to approve the operating budget, which will be for the calendar year 2021, and in the amount of an appropriate funds in the amount of two hundred and twenty-two million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. As you know, the board held two public hearings on this budget. And the budget is funded by operating revenues from the 2021 calendar year, which are estimated to be sufficient to meet operating expenses. The other budget item that's related, that's on the MSD's regular agenda, is also a request to provide a third amendment to the 2020 operating budget. This is item number seven on your agenda. This is for Personnel Services. This is a no-cost amendment to the existing 2020 MSD operating budget solely for Personnel Services. And it seeks to reallocate personnel funds from three MSD divisions, Business Services, Compliance Services and Waste Water Treatment to the Waste Water Engineering Division MSD in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars in order to cover Personnel deficit in the existing budget. The existing total MSD 2020 operating budget of two hundred and nineteen million, seven hundred thousand is not increased. There is no fiscal impact in that regard, and this this change does not affect any rate increases.
Okay. So, thank you. I have a different number for the operating budget. Clarity. It's close, but it's not the same. So why don't we move on then to the CIP and talk about the capital budget? And then we'll go back and do them all together. How about that? So Holly, Diana, you referenced Holly related to, it's by leave number eighteen.
MSD CIP. So Holly, I.
There she is.
No, you were looking.
I thought Holly wanted to kick it off, but I'm if.
Okay, okay. I'm going to, I'm going to interject on myself here and give Holly a minute to look at that number that I just referenced. Jack, walk, I assume you're going to walk us through items six and eight as well?
Yes, Commissioner.
All right. Well, let's let's pop over to those real quick and then we'll go back to the CIP. How about that, Holly? We're going to give you a couple of minutes here.
And and just for clarity, let me go back to the 2021 MSD operating budget. It was my switching of two numbers. So I. Seven, eight, seven, eight, four, three.
Oh, there we go. Now we're in sync. Very good. Holly, no worries. Crisis averted.
So item number six is a request for the board to to consider and approve legislation with regard to the Muddy Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant, EHRT, which stands for High Rate Treatment, Enhanced High Rate Treatment Facility and Pump Station. This project is located in Sailor Park, community of the city of Cincinnati, at the Muddy Creek Waste Water Treatment Plant. And the request is to appropriate eight point seven million dollars and with a total estimated cost, project cost of one hundred and fourteen point seven million. The activities that are requested to be funded is to progress through additional planning and design phases for future construction of the EHRT at the the treatment plant, as well as a pump station and screenings facility with a capacity of approximately eleven to twenty-four MGD, million gallons daily. The existing pump station and screening facility cannot be expanded to deliver flow needed by the proposed new EHRT. And the request for planning dollars will be to perform various activities, which include providing for a business case evaluation to recommend the initial size of the facility, the HRT, and a proposed project delivery method, as well as to evaluate and make a recommendation to the board of how to address asset management needs and wet weather capacity issues at the existing Muddy Creek Pump Station.
Okay, and I'm just going to note that those are twenty twenty dollars. Okay. And then item number eight?
Item number eight, and I'm going to do a little bit of a educational as well as a narrative here because it's an item I don't believe that this board has encountered before. But the request is to authorize the MSD to enter into, have the ability to enter into a negotiation with a developer to bring together a what's called a 514 agreement. The 514 agreement is part of MSD's rules and regulations that are in section 514 of Article Five, called Approval of Plans for Waste Water Treatment Works. This article allows for the board, if they wish, to decide if they want to support certain private development within the county and the MSD service area through several financial incentives, such as reimbursable costs for eligible tap-in fees, reimbursable costs for sewer pipe upsizing if requested by MSD, and connection credits for stormwater facilities upstream of a CSO, SSO, or into a sanitary sewer which flows into a combined sewer system upstream of a CSO. So the the section 514 provides a a pattern and a process that MSD has to go through in order to bring forward the final agreement. The first, which we're requesting today, is authorization to negotiate. The next is to develop an agreement. And then finally, that agreement will be brought back to the board for their acceptance and approval. The the specifics of the current request is for coming from the Grotto Investments LLC for developing the Ivy Rose subdivision, which is located in Green Township on Sixteen Acres between four, three, four, five, three, five and four, five, four, five, Boomer Road. And then consists of residential properties. The developer is proposing an eight-inch, thirty-eight-hundred linear feet of sanitary sewer to connect into an existing MSD sewer system on Remlin Road. And the sewer is adjacent to MSD's existing Stratford Lakes Pump Station on Castle Brook Court, also in Green Township. The request from MSD and from the developer, who I believe is also on the Zoom call today, is for, again, the ability to enter into a negotiation. MSD sees an opportunity for expanding what the developer is doing through an upsizing effort. And we're currently studying that. And that will be the product of that study and that evaluation will result in an agreement, as I indicated, to be brought back to your board. If you have any questions with me today, is also beside Deputy Director and Chief Engineer Ryan Welsh, is also Tom Crawford, who is with MSD's Development Services, who would be managing this process. And for the capital project is Matt Spadari from MSD as well.
Thank you. All right. I tell you what. So we've got those three items that are not related to the cap budget or the operating budget. This is one of those three. So Commissioners, are there any questions? I know I'm jumping around a little bit, but any questions related to regular agenda items six, seven or eight?
Madam President, I had a question about number eight, Jack. This section 514 agreement is that you were saying it has not come before the Commission before. Is there a reason why it's coming before us now, this this agreement? And what the urgency of passing it today is?
This type of request has not come before this board with this members before. And to my knowledge, in in having managed our MSD's legislative process since 2002. So this this is, that's why I provided an additional explanation for you all, because this is a new process that you haven't yet seen. The urgency is that the developer is making a request of MSD is ready to begin some construction, as I understand.
Oh, now, from what I heard from you that you would sign, another agreement will come to the board. So I'm thinking they're not starting construction without the other agreement coming before the board, correct?
The, that is correct. The the construction that they may be doing, and I'll let the developer who's on the call, if he wants to explain that further, would not be impacted by the agreement. The agreement itself still needs to have the board approval if there is going to be any incentivization from the board to the developer.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
So let me just ask then, Bridget, evidently, what is the name of the developer, Jack?
John Niehaus.
So could you see if John Niehaus? John, raise your hand if you would like to make a comment related to this item. Oh, John has popped up. I'm assuming that he does want to make a comment.
Eric, are you on?
We can hear you.
Okay. Excuse. This is for the development Ivy Roads that Jack mentioned there. We've started clearing a couple of weeks ago and they started moving dirt yesterday on the project. MSD wants to get rid of a lift station next door that's having a lot of problems, needs major renovation. So this piggybacking together would get rid of that old plant. Save the MSD, from what I understand, about forty thousand dollars per year in operating costs, which obviously then saves the county that amount per year. Working together to get this project done, much less the pretty large number that it's going to take to refurbish that lift station. So we are in motion of doing our development. MSD has asked that we can try to work together, and that's why the urgency of of getting it done today or quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think that, I think that confused me a little more. My understanding was we were going to approve or not approve the 514 agreement and that no network had been started. So I was just a little confused on that.
May I clarify this, Karen? What this is, this is the first step. This allows MSD to enter into an agreement is what we're author, what you're authorizing today. Prior to that, they didn't have your authorization to enter into an agreement. So there have been discussions and I have met with Mr. Niehaus a couple of times. We're trying to coordinate so that it does actually have a positive impact on the MSD system overall.
Okay, thanks, Karen.
Okay.
Yes, that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Niehaus. All right, Commissioner Parks, any questions related to?
Questions, the questions, they've been cleared out. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda items six, seven and eight.
Madam, Madam President?
Yes.
I'm sorry, if I could just just real quickly, the administration is okay with with all these items. There was just one comment I wanted to make in particular on item number six, just because it is something, it is a project that that correlates with our Phase Two A plan. So I just just wanted to make sure the board understood that. And as MSD goes about the the business case evaluation and the planning work for this, I just think it's important that we, that MSD stay in close touch with the county on this. Both so that we understand how the business case evaluation turns out, especially to the degree that there is any change in the in what the BCE recommends that may have an impact on our Phase Two A programming, that we understand that quickly and can discuss that before we move on to the next to the next phase. So just just wanted to make that clear for the board, the connection there with our Phase Two A, and just ensure that MSD is on board with making sure that communication is is tight with the county team, which I'm sure they are. But just wanted to raise that to the board.
Okay. And a conversation to come also with the CIP. So let me, let's dispose of these items, six, seven and eight from the regular agenda. I'm going to move that we approve of these three items.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yeah.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Okay, so we've talked about item number nine. Let's move to the CIP by leave item number eighteen. I don't know who's going to lead on this. Holly, is it you?
I think Holly was going to lead on this, yes.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Good afternoon. We're pleased to have worked very closely with MSD over the past few weeks on the on the 2021 CIP. And I think in general, the the changes that have been made aren't significant compared to what was submitted by MSD. And so I just want to tee it off, tee it up and just say I'm, I want to thank both MSD and the county team for their long hours over the past few to several days to come to a point where we are recommending a CIP and the the book that MSD provided. I'm going to, in a second, turn it over to Joe Graff, who really helped a lot on this project to further walk through the resolutions that are provided for you to approve of the CIP. We do not have modifications to MSD's CIP that was submitted last night, the revised CIP. But we do have some clarifications in the in the in the resolution. So with that, I believe Joe is on the the line. There he is. Hi, Joe. Again, I want to thank Joe and again, our team, Karen Ball, the rest of the team, as well as MSD and Orion Welsh was was heavily involved. And I'm sure there's several I'm forgetting. I apologize, Director Christie. But to turn it over to Joe to talk through any other additional information on the CIP and to walk through the resolutions.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. At first, I want to thank very much Director Christie and Ryan and and all MSD staff who who were involved in the CIP. We've had excellent teamwork over the last several weeks and met several times, exchanged a lot of information. And the book, the CIP that's before you today is is a mutual mutually agreed upon effort that took a lot of hard work, but but we came to a very good place. So I want to thank everybody involved and really appreciate everyone's efforts. The the CIP really represents, as I said, kind of a real good team effort. Just to give some examples, there are three projects, whip projects, that upon MSD's request were moved forward into 2021. And these are Phase Two A projects that were originally scheduled for later in the in the Phase Two A program, moved forward upon MSD's request and are being funded in 2021. We also agreed to ways to improve our project communication and coordination between the county and MSD that are going to be implemented in 2021. that are going to be implemented in 2021. And, and there were several important projects that MSD agreed to perform additional planning in order to clarify some, some project details that were still under discussion. So, again, thank, thanks to everyone for that, for that effort. The, you have four resolutions in front of you today. The first approves and adopts the 2021 to 2025 CIP. The total value of the 2021 budget is one hundred and thirty, one hundred and twenty-three million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. Of that amount, there is seventy-two million, five hundred and forty-two thousand, three ninety-one that is actually appropriated today when you sign this resolution. Of that seventy-two million dollars, forty-two and a half million dollars are going to be used for planning, design, and easement activities of thirty-eight projects. Twenty-four million, almost twenty-five million of that seventy-two million will be used to fund construction activities from four allowances that are identified in Exhibit B. And then five million dollars will fund the program contingency. The resolution does have, does note that there are, there's going to be an amendment to this resolution that's brought forward by MSD no later than January tenth. Inadvertently, as we were pulling this together over the last couple of days, there were some things that were, were left out of the CIP book or needed to be updated that didn't occur. So, it's, it's a, there are three project fact sheets that will be updated, and there are two projects that will be added to the CIP. One is the, the HSTS Elimination Allowance, and another one is a planning project for, for SSO six oh three and seven oh four improvements. And then finally, in this first resolution, you'll note that there's a fifty-million-dollar difference between the one hundred and twenty-three-million-dollar total and the seventy-two-million dollars that you're appropriating today. And those funds will be brought to you for, for authorization during the course of 2021 by separate legislation as construction projects are ready to advance. The second resolution authorizes MSD to prepare detailed plans, specifications, estimates of cost, and/or other related documents for the thirty-eight planning and design projects that are listed in Appendix A of the CI, of the CIP book. The third resolution authorizes MSD to prepare plans, specifications, estimates of cost, and other related documents for the construction projects that are listed in Exhibit B of the CIP book. Those are those four allowances that I spoke to earlier. And then the fourth resolution, the board declares the necessity to construct the sewer projects that are identified in those four allowances in Appendix B. Or, I'm sorry, Exhibit B. So, those are the four resolutions before you, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you. The resolutions that you refer to, Joe, yeah, they're all incorporated into one item. So, I just want to bring some clarity to this for my colleagues and for myself, for that matter, that all the resolutions you refer to are included in by leave eighteen.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, I, I also want to comment to these two items, both of these budgets, that we did have public hearings related to these items. People weighed in. We thank the general public for weighing in on the items. And I, you know, it's always important to remind folks that we are doing consent decree projects here that we are mandated to do on an ongoing basis. But we also are tackling asset management, which is so critical to an aging system. And the SBU program is also part of these budgets. And so, you know, the, this is such important work to the people of this county. And I don't know how many times I've heard how collaborative the process was. And so, that's good news. I know you guys work really hard to come together on these, and I, I know it's complicated. So, thank you to both teams, both on the city and the county side, for coming together and agreeing to something that we can feel proud of and feel good about moving forward in both cases, operating and capital. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Madam President. Joe, you had mentioned about an amendment that will be coming forth January the tenth. What's, what's the dollar amount on that amendment? Is that the fifty million you were mentioning, or?
No, the, 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 the two projects that are going to be added total, one of them is two-point-one million dollars, and the other one is three hundred and fifty, fifty thousand. So, one is a planning project, and, and the other one is an allowance.
So, the reason why it was not included in this information was?
It was just inadvertently left out of the book that we got. MSD agreed to produce an updated CIP book after our, our discussions over the last few days. And it was a mad rush for, for them to compile all that information and, and make sure that it was out, all in there. So, it, it was just, just simply left out by mistake.
Okay. And I just want to comment also, Madam President, that the way the teams work together, the county team and MSD, and Diana did not miss a beat as it relates to the questions that came up during the hearings and, and everything. And they definitely had a listening ear to what some of the commissioners' concerns were, and I appreciate that. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move to the items, Director Christie, is there anything else that we should consider?
No, just, I should echo the thanks to the county team as well. We, we all have worked a lot over the last couple of weeks. And the only thing I think we can improve on next year is to not have it be quite so late in the game till we get this consensus. But, but it. A better process.
To that, including the clerk.
Yes, so, but it's much improved. So, thank you. And, yeah, anything else to add?
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, if I could just very quickly, just in terms of the logistics and the timing, I do just, just for clarity's sake, want to say that as it related to getting all the stuff onto the agenda, I think MSD got us the, the book actually last night. So, it was the county, county administration at that point had to just go through and make sure everything was still the way we thought it was and get the resolutions all together. So, that would be on us in terms of the lateness of getting it to Jackie. So, I just want to make sure that, that the board knows that MSD did get us, to us last night.
And, and Madam President, I might want to comment. I might be the only one that's happy about the delayed deliberation because it only shows that how important MSD is to the county and that the commissioner, I, I can only speak for myself. But you guys wanted to review things very closely and make sure everything was right, and it took a little longer. I was just thinking I may not be able to promise next year that it'll be a shorter time. But I think it just shows the residents that we, and you guys care. We all care, and we want to do this thing right. And it took a little longer to do that, so.
Thank you. I would like to take these items separately. And so, I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution approving and adopting a 2021 operating budget for MSD, the amount being two hundred and twenty-two million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-three.
Second.
My apologies, I was muted. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
All right, and I'm also going to move that we approve of the resolutions approving and adopting the MSD 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program for the MSD, Hamilton County, by the Board of County Commissioners with conditions and directives to MSD and appropriating funds therefore, authorizing the preparation of detailed plans, specifications, estimate of cost, and/or other relevant documents for the 2021 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program, approving the detailed plans, specifications, estimate of cost, and/or other relevant documents for the 2021, 2025 Capital Improvement Program Exhibit B, declaring the necessity to construct sewer projects identified in Exhibit B, and determining to proceed with improvements and authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all.
Good work.
On that. Appreciate all the time and effort. We are going to go back to the regular agenda. We've got item number ten. Are we, we in consent right now? We sure are. All right, we have moved to the consent agenda. Items ten through forty-two. I just want to comment that these are all over the map. And this is, you know, again, the nature of an end-of-the-year meeting. Lots of them are board appointments, kind of bringing all the boards up to date, up to speed, if, if any terms had expired. Sort is included here. Very, very excited about how that's going to move forward. So, just want to highlight those couple of things. Commissioners, any comments or questions related to any of the consent agenda items?
I have no comments or questions.
No comments, thank you.
Going to move that we approve of consent agenda items ten through forty-two.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
I believe that concludes our agenda. Jeff, am I correct?
I believe you are correct.
Wow, we made quick work of that, ladies. Okay, very good. So, just as a reminder, one more meeting, staff meeting on Tuesday. That'll be our last meeting of the year. We will look forward to that. And thank you again to everyone. We've accomplished quite a bit here today related to the finances of the county and MSD. Really huge, huge, important items that we have dealt with. And so, thank you again to staff, everybody involved in getting us to this point and making this run as smoothly as possible. So, thank you all. Commissioners, I'm going to move that we.
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.